Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Talamay.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Here.
If the quorum is present, we'll stand and join you.
Mayor.
Let's please staff the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Declare quorum as present. If you haven't noticed by now, tonight is student government night. So we're going to have three students at Fenton High School assisting us in conducting the council meeting. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium. I'm sorry. You're supposed to tell me when I do something wrong. Bills, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve a list of bills dated May 3, 2007, for $222,569.19.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman, can I?
Page 11. Okay, about halfway down. Mr. Michael Jordan reimbursement for work on the roadway project. Who is Michael Jordan and why are we paying him $1,200? And not the basketball guy and all that.
Mr. Manager? I'm sorry, Alderman. I don't have that information with me, but I'll certainly research it and get back to you as soon as I have it available. It, I'm sure it's a legitimate expenditure, but it's not the Michael Jordan you're thinking of.
No, it's not. I was just thinking that if he was engineering or doing whatever, that he would be part of a firm or something. No?
Alderman Coles?
I could tell you about it. He lives next door to me.
So?
He did, they, when they do, during the street, they tore up his sprinkler system. And that is what they charged to fix up his sprinkler system.
Okay.
Which I thought, no, let me finish. I thought Mr. Holmes wasn't going to pay that because they had removed that before they did the job on the sidewalks, on the street. But I guess they had a meeting and I guess he decided to keep them happy and pay it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, now, thank you for refreshing my memory. I did review that. We did have a meeting on that. And basically, it was a split. He had submitted more than that amount. And, right, but we only paid for that portion that we feel we have a liability to pay for.
Alderman Wesley?
I have a question on that. Did we tear it up or did the contractor that we hired tear it up?
Mr. Manager?
It was the contractor and we're working out the payment. He's ultimately responsible, but we wanted to respond to our resident, take care of it. It will be passed on to the person.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Hold on. Alderman Coles, do you have a question?
Also, I will be coming up because they tore mine out too and mine is being processed right now.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Shrocky?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Talamay?
Yes.
That passes. Any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium, give us your name and address. Hearing none. I do have some written communiques. First one from the DuPage Water Commission to address to Mr. Williams. Enclosed is check number 2832 in the amount of $744,402, as directed by amended resolution number R-28-07, which was approved at the April 12, 2007 commission meeting. Resolution R-28-07 declared a rebate to the contract customers in the aggregate amount of $40 million, signed by Robert Martin, General Manager. So that's our share of the distribution from the Water Commission. I have another letter from Doug Heron, which I think we need to pass on to the Assistant City Manager. Dear Mayor Johnson, please pass this letter to the appropriate department for a response. I would appreciate answers to the following questions concerning garbage pickup. Question one, is there a limit to how many trash cans may be placed at the curbside? Two, is there a weight limit per can? Three, does someone monitor these limits each week? And four, has the cost of trash pickup increased recently? Sincerely, Doug Heron, 373 North Elmwood Avenue. And he provided us with a return envelope.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Wesley?
Are you done? I forgot something that I want to bring up.
All right. Let me finish with a couple more written communiques. Dear Mayor Johnson, recently I have chosen not to pursue another term on the Wooddale Police Pension Board. Unfortunately, my schedule continues to demand more and more time and has kept me from attending some of the meetings in the last year. I served on the board for approximately 25 years with a short time off during those years on the board. When I started on the board, we had less than $1 million in the fund. Today, we have over $15 million and counting. Many changes have occurred during that time. Additionally, there are attempts at this time to change legislation, which if enacted, could force control of the fund out of local control into the hands of the state. That would be catastrophic, not only to the Wooddale Fund, but all funds in the state. I would encourage you and the city council to work hard at not allowing this to occur. I would like to thank you for the privilege of serving the city, which I still feel is home in the capacity as a board member. Current board is extremely dedicated and professional and I know will continue to make wise decisions regarding the investment of fund monies. You are extremely lucky to have people like these managing the fund. Sincerely, Dennis A. Coletzo, Chief of Police of the City of Northlake. Another letter from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Dear Mayor Johnson, and it should also say Alderman Winger. On behalf of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and Clean Air Counts, thank you for your championship of the Clean Air Counts Campaign. Your application for bronze level designation as a clean air community has been approved. Engaging in outreach efforts to promote clean air initiatives is the first step towards improving air quality. We have included a table highlighting measures required for the silver, gold, and platinum level participation. We look forward to continuing to work with your community to promote the Clean Air Counts Campaign. Signed, Thomas Morowski, President of the Village of Midlothian. And last thing I want to advise our seniors of and anyone wishing to volunteer, there will be short days. Senior citizens in our community can have free work done. Raking leaves, planting flowers, bundling branches, trimming bushes, general yard cleanup work, and other light remodeling projects. This is a free service provided for by volunteers within the community. And the dates those services are available are May 5 and 6, May 12 and 13, and May 19 and 20. Anybody interested in having that service conducted should contact the DuPage Senior Citizens Council at 620-0804. Again, that's at the DuPage Senior Citizens Council, 620-0804. We're going to put this on our website and on the cable TV as well. Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I was, I attended a class yesterday at the junior high, which happened to be with weather spotting and knowing how we could prepare for disaster in the committee. It was a very outstanding class that we attended. It was a three-hour class. This is what the Stormwater has been working on to get this committee storm ready. This is what we needed to have a program, outreach program to the public. And we have completed that course at this time. And I just want to thank the Police Department for putting that together. And I'm sure that will come as a report, but it was very impressive. Someone from National Weather came out and an Addison police sergeant came out and gave a presentation of what we need to be ready for tornado and other disasters. So it was well, well-recognized. There was 49 people that attended it last night.
Now it is time to recognize and put our students on the spot this evening and get their suggestions on how Wooddale can be a better community. Things that you think that maybe we should improve. On my left is Mayor Mansour Ahmed and on my right is Alderman Jamie Biagi. And on my left, Alderman Dimitri Funtis. Thank you. I'm getting an assist here. We had the opportunity to meet with him for an hour before the city council meeting. We shared some ideas on some of the things that we do, some of the things the city is about, and got some of their suggestions on how they think Wooddale could be a better community. So who wants to go first? Mayor?
I was, we were all suggesting that we get a new theater in town because that would be good for the kids to do something. It would be good for pastime. Instead of having to go down to York or Oak Grove. Because, yeah, you just want to pass time. Have fun.
Alderman?
And to add to that, the Bensonville Theater has older movies that are already on DVD, so we don't usually go there. And I'm pretty sure whatever business they have, we'd probably take away if we added our own theater here. And, yeah, I'd like to have a movie theater.
Alderman, you're going to need to turn the microphone on and speak directly into it, please.
Okay. Yeah, we also decided that it would be a good idea to add like an ice cream parlor or something along with it, or like a downtown Wooddale thing, where like kids and teenagers could just hang out and walk around. Because half the time, that's what we're looking to do, is just to have a place to like hang out and just have fun overall without spending so much money. So we thought it would be a good idea to maybe add like a downtown Wooddale place or something. I don't know.
No, that's very good. Any other comments or questions for us? Or any of the Aldermen have any? Yes.
And about the downtown area, it's just, we just would like to have a place where we can go to hang out after school because like in Wooddale, as you can see, since we want a movie theater, there's not really much to do, so we usually end up like walking around at the mall or doing something. But if we have a place to hang out, then we could become, go over there, be active socially, and it'd keep us out of trouble. And it'd be a fun place.
We have the police chief in the second row who will keep you out of trouble if there's any problems. Any, Mr. Mayor? Sure. One of the things we ask the students is on, one of the issues that we constantly face is when we reconstruct a street, whether as a matter of policy, we should automatically add sidewalks as a public safety issue. Several of the, usually when we do that, half the residents like the idea and half the residents are opposed. And also, come to think of it, if you could comment on your thoughts you shared with us about the dilemma we face on O'Hare Airport. Whether we should continue the opposition or whether we should try to negotiate whatever we can for the benefit of the city of Wooddale. I know you had some strong thoughts on that as well. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I thought that since the city of Chicago is so strong already, there'll be no point in trying to fight them. Instead, we should try to negotiate with them and talk to them and try to get as many benefits as possible for the community of Bensonville and Wooddale as a whole. Thank you.
And I think one of your Aldermen had an opposing point of view, so.
Yeah, well, what I believe is that if we like allow them to do this and we like cease to oppose them, then there's going to be a lot of people that are going to get angry with us because there's people that don't want to lose their houses. And adding of this runway is going to cause more pollution. It's going to affect our quality of life. And there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be angry about this.
Alderman, I think you've learned to realize we're dealing with the city of Chicago. They've got millions and millions of dollars. Let's just try to suck some of that in and help out our small community. And besides, do you know how much it costs to go to court with these people? I don't think you realize that.
Well, I don't know if you've heard of David and Goliath. I believe in that David won and I think we could try and fight that.
Let's try to separate church and state here.
Well, so far, it seems to be one-to-one, so I think that makes you the deciding vote on the issue here.
I don't know. I, yeah. I don't know. I personally believe that the city couldn't really, pretty much like pay us back enough for what they're doing. Like, they're taking away people's houses and what they like grew up with. And they really can't pay us back for what they did by taking away houses. But I guess for them, we could just try to make them like make up for as much as they can. But they really can't repay us for what they took from us, in a way, you know?
Well, that was an interesting debate. And not unlike some that we have had here, except they're usually a lot longer. Any other comments or questions or suggestions? Yes, sir. Alderman?
I have a question is, now, for Mayor Daley to do this, and it seems that we do not vote for Mayor Daley, how is he able to have control over what happens in Wooddale and Bensonville?
That's a question for Mr. Bond.
There's many complex factors that go into that consideration, one which I think would require significant study before comment.
That's a good way to get out of it, Mr. Bond.
Alderman Talamay?
Yeah, I have nothing to lose, so. The way I look at it, it's like this. You know, the comment's been made about the power of Chicago, and that is true. There's always been a power in Chicago. And a lot of it has to do with political clout. And that's really comes, what it really comes down to. And if you've got people in your pocket, you're going to do what you can. And, you know, you're going to do it for your city, for your community. And that's really what Chicago's been doing forever, okay? When Chicago wants something, Chicago goes out and they're not afraid to push that extra button or that extra person, okay, to get what they want. You know, the comment was made, should we work with, you know, should we work with the mayor? I don't know if it's, it may be too late for us to deal with Chicago at this point because I don't know if there's anything where we would get from it, you know? Because what is happening, you know, you hear both, on both sides, you've heard, you know, where they're running out of money, they've already, you know, gone over their budgeted amount for the airfield and, you know, for the things that they're doing. But you know what? Some way, somehow, Chicago always seems to manage to come up with the extra funding to do what they have to do to get things done. And it may take a little bit of time, but, you know, it's like, these things, you know, these things will become a reality, you know, somewhere down the road. Should we go out as a community and try to get what we can or still get what we can? There's no question. Should we fight the extra southern runway? There's no question we should. But we should also look at going in, looking at saying, yeah, we're opposed to this, but we want to look at what can we do for our residents? What can we do for our community so that we don't? Because the bottom line is, Wooddale is one of the communities, as well as Bensonville, that are going to be the most affected by what happens at that airfield. And they're already, they've already extended the runway that comes over, comes over Wooddale or in the process by 3,000 feet, which means planes are going to be lower. So we, as a community, we have to stand together and say, you know what? We really don't want any, anymore because there is a quality of life issue and there's no question about that. But as far as how Chicago does it, it's all political. There's no question. They've got people downstate, they've got people at the federal level, and that's really what you need. When you have, you know, your two senators from Illinois are both Democrats. Daley's a Democrat and that's who's in power right now in Washington. That is where it's at. That's how things happen. And it's sad because what happens is the people don't really have a voice anymore in what goes on.
Alderman?
And like how we're talking about O'Hare expansion, in terms of reparations, is there anything that we're set to get if it does like indeed get passed for O'Hare expansion?
One of the things we talked about is the bill that's currently before Springfield. It's a House bill Representative Skip Saviano has proposed for a $20 million property tax replacement for Fenton High School and for District 2 to cover the loss over the next 10 years of the 500 homes and the 50 businesses that are being taken out in Bensonville. That's one of the things. Certainly, there are some of the opinion that western access will be a tremendous economic windfall for the city with the redevelopment of the Thorndale Corridor. Of course, with that economic benefit also comes the additional noise and pollution. As we talked, there'll be a 250% increase in the amount of homes that are affected by sound of that southern runway and the expansion of the current east-west runway goes in. So there's a little give and take on both sides. Alderman?
And in terms of the sound, we were talking earlier about Chicago would have to, like you said, would have to pay to soundproof our homes. And how are they going to go like about there? Are they going to come to our houses and fix our windows? Or are we going to have to contact them? Or how's that work?
Alderman Talamay?
Now, the way it works is that, the way it works right now is that there is a criteria, set criteria that's been established for years where they actually come in and they look at the decibel level for the sound, or the sound, what they call the sound area. And they have already done probably close to 400 homes in Wooddale and probably have about another, in my opinion, probably at least another 1,500 that they should, theoretically, they should do. I mean, you know, especially when you look at, they do one house and the house right next to it, they have skipped completely because they said they don't get any noise. So go figure. But when they're ready, what they will do is they will approach the residents. They will send them a certified letter stating, please come to a meeting on a specific date. And then at that meeting, they will go over what they're offering, part of their program. And then it's up to the individual residents as to whether or not they want to participate in the program. They basically have to sign their life away because the, you know, there's no real guarantees on the, other than the warranties on the actual things that they put in. So like if they put in windows, there's a warranty on it, but there's no real guarantee of the craftsmanship. So one of the things that we have done as a city is several years ago, we said, okay, if they're going to come out and they're going to soundproof any homes in Wooddale, we're going to make sure that our building inspectors go out and inspect all of the work that they're doing to make sure that it is being done properly. Because I will tell you, the first year the program was here, it wasn't. No sooner had they put in doors, new doors, within a couple of months, the doors were warped. Put in new windows, we had cracks in the windows, people had seepage, air seepage in their homes. And we've made sure that that isn't, doesn't happen again. And in fact, the last year that the program was here, which was 2006, the, we received nothing but good comments, okay, from the residents that were involved, as well as from our building inspectors, that they finally had a good contractor come in and do good work.
Alderman Biagi?
I was just kind of like, I'm going to refer back to the debate. And I was thinking about it because someone brought up a good point about is this really worth the fight? Because it's already set that they're going to expand the airport. We can oppose it, we can protest. But it's pretty much set that they're going to expand the airport. So I was kind of thinking like, what if we take what we can get, actually like push more than what we can get? And then we can actually make things happen and make this town like a better town and make Fenton a better school because part of the reparations does go to Fenton, right? So like make everything a better place like we work towards. And then like instead of wasting money on going to court, trying to fight for this, we can actually do the things that we talked about doing.
I agree with you.
I was going to see if I can get one of the veteran Aldermen to respond to that, if anybody wanted to comment on that.
I would definitely concur with that. I've said for years that we should be sitting down and negotiating. I mean, we can oppose, there's nothing wrong with us, with the city of Wooddale opposing the expansion, you know, voicing our opinions on that at all. But I also agree that as a city, what we should be doing is sitting down at the table and at least talking about it with the people that are involved to see what can we get for our residents. And I'm not talking just about the soundproofing. I'm talking about what can we get in terms of a monetary value? Because there is a major impact. Even, you think about it, they, they're coming out and they're soundproofing the homes. And what does that do? Basically, in the summertime, if you want to go outside, you're still going to have to deal with all that noise. So your quality of life as a resident in the city is still going to be impacted. So somehow, some way, Chicago should be made to give the city something back that we, as a city, could use to help all of the residents in the community. And not just in terms of just the soundproofing. So I totally agree with what you're saying.
Did I discuss with you talking freely, openly, and honestly about issues in front of a reporter from the Daily Herald? Alderman Dimitri?
All right, well, while we were talking about O'Hare expansion, I don't, I don't think we should yield to them until it's absolutely necessary because there's an old saying that if you don't stand up for something, you'll fall for anything. So if we don't stand up for them for, you know, for quite a bit, until it's absolutely necessary for us to yield, then we should. But if we can still fight, then I think we should continue to fight.
Mr. Mayor?
As far as I'm concerned, we've been fighting this back when I was in Bensonville because I actually had to move because of O'Hare expansion. And some people say they give you house value, but they actually almost double it. Sometimes even triple it if you get a lawyer. But the quality of life is true. So I'm not a doc.
Alderman Dimitri?
I think in your case, kind of like those infomercials where like results aren't typical. Because I don't think everyone gets double what their house is worth. Maybe you might be one of those special cases, but I'm sure it's not always the same.
Mr. Mayor? I think this was the most interesting and most interactive student government night that we have had. Do you have any comments that you want to make about Boy State and Girl State? Ralph Borcatell, representing the American Legion. Did you make sure the microphone is on?
Yes, it's on, I believe.
As long as the green light is on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Never do I omit a chance when I have a little time to talk about Boy State and Girl State. Unfortunately, it was partially my fault that we didn't have as many students as I would like to have. I hope that next year with my successor, since this will be my last year doing this, my successor will have at least one person sitting next to each Alderman and each village, each city official and participating in it. But we have two gentlemen here tonight, the acting mayor and one of our Aldermen is going to be going to Boy State. And that's what the American Legion provides for juniors in high school. It's a week-long leadership course in government. And when they get through with that, they will have elected their own Aldermen, their own mayors, appointed fire and police commissioners. They will have also elected county officials and state officials, all the way up to the governor of the state of Boy State. The boys, the two boys that are governor and, I'm sorry, three boys. The governor and the two senators are elected will go to Boys Nation in Washington, D.C. later on in the year. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the members of the city council, Mimi Anderson, and everybody that's Fenton High School District 100 for working with us and putting this program on. Thank you.
Ralph, thank you for your years of service and thank the students for a great job. And at this time, we have a presentation to make to the students. If Alderman, you could get out your certificates. And Mr. Mayor, excellent job. And that brings us to Mr. Manager's report. No report, Mr. Mayor? That brings us to consent agenda. Any objections to any items on the consent agenda? May I motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now may I motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, being approval to waive the bid process for red light enforcement program and approval for city manager to negotiate with ACS for both front and rear cameras for the red light enforcement program. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
On the question?
Mr. Bond?
On the, for the contract, I thought it was supposed to be for not to exceed two years for the first term. I didn't see that in the minutes of the committee, so just to make sure it doesn't get lost.
Manager? We've already begun that negotiation and that will be part of the final contract. And they basically have conceded to a two-year contract. Is that correct, Chief? And they basically have conceded to a two-year contract. Is that correct, Chief? Yes, we're on our way and, and we appreciate your, your direction and your idea.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Toleman?
Yes.
That passes. Uh, committee reports, planning and zoning and building, Alderman Knight?
No report, Mayor.
Public health, safety, and judiciary, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Uh, public works, Alderman Subak?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, authorizing sale of certain personal property, uh, by the city of Wooddale.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Toleman?
Yes.
That passes ordinance 0-07-14.
That ends my report.
Finance and administration, Alderman Winger?
I have no report.
Community and economic development, Alderman Toleman?
No report.
One of the other businesses may have a motion to approve an ordinance ascertaining the prevailing wage rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works of the city of Wooddale. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Toleman?
Yes.
That passes. Uh, there are no items to be referred. There are no items for information only. We do need to go to executive session. May a motion to adjourn the city council to executive session for purposes of review of the official minutes and collective bargaining pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C 21 and 2C 2. Alderman Shaki, was that your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Toleman?
Yes.
That passes. We're adjourned.